I'd like to take, take a minute to remember Bob Knoll who passed away this past month. Amen. A pleasure to lead you through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. Ms. Bailey, will you please take role? Mr. Bills? Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Ringo?
Here.
Ms. Stover?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Swadsworth?
Here.
And Mayor Jansen?
Here.
We have four. Um, next on the list, approval of minutes from July sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion, board changes?
What's your approval?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, abstain, have to sit.
Okay. All right. Um, up first, please report. Chief Hall?
Good evening, everybody. Um, statistics for July twenty twenty five, we had one thousand five hundred ninety-seven calls for service, uh, compared to the surrounding cities around us. Uh, all calls dispatched were sixty-nine percent to Villa Hills, thirty-one percent, uh, to Crescent Springs. Uh, just self-initiated calls went to fifty-three percent to Villa Hills and forty-seven percent to Crescent Springs. The primary difference between those were, um, um, squad runs and alarm calls. Increase in our activity over the past month at the direction of supervisors and command staff. We had ten crimes, twenty-two traffic collisions, issued seventy-nine citations, ninety-nine warnings missed by one. Oh, I had a personal goal of a hundred on that, but that's okay. Um, sixty call responses, nine domestic reports, and one even races on that. Uh, the map I provided here, it's a little bit, I keep trying to get a better visual on that, but that's just is ju- those are just the citations. I don't have the warning on there as well, but you can kind of see, obviously, the major thoroughfare areas there. Traffic collisions, again, um, only one really kind of stands out is, uh, Buttermilk and Anderson, uh, which the, which had the fourteen percent. And there's just a smattering across the, uh, both cities for, uh, collisions, uh, primarily in, uh, Crescent Springs. We had more, but, uh, again, the, demographic doesn't lie and you can kind of see on the map that's providing where all the crashes took place. Although both our injury crashes did take place in, uh, in Villa Hills for the past month. Luckily, no major injuries. Uh, Sergeant Lucas, uh, again, a lot of his cases are staying open. He was able to, uh, close out, I'll say close out. Uh, was able to get a couple arrest warrants, uh, for different suspects. One was a theft of lottery tickets case that he was able to identify suspect and got warrant issued. A theft case where he was able to get a, a, a warrant issued. Uh, he still continues to work our two, uh, actually, one now primarily overdose death, which does include the federal government on that and DEA. So, um, two arrests have been made thus far in that for importing fentanyl. And that case continues to, uh, gain traction with the AUSA and look and take more people, I'd say down, but we'll arrest her fourth time in that soon. So, again, great, kudos to him. He also opened up a couple different cases, one being a, uh, potential, uh, what do you want to call that? Secular assault case, we'll just leave it at that while we're in my right now that he's working. So, he, he does stay busy, uh, for very important cases. There's no doubt about that. July, our training, we focused on chapter four point seven, early intervention, and twelve point one of code of conduct. Um, K nine, there were nine hours of training for the K nine. Both Officer Snyder and Officer Watson attended to a vehicle interdiction training class in Ohio. Um, I was asked before what vehicle interdiction training is. These are, um, basically beyond a simple traffic stop. Interdiction has to do with, um, stopping vehicles that are primarily used in narcotics, uh, and trafficking. Or you're looking for vehicular behaviors, um, and amazingly enough, there is a science to it on looking on how people act when they see the police that have nothing to hide and those that do have something to hide. And you'd be very interested to see how things, uh, play out on that. We're not going to let all of our tricks of the trade out on that by any way, shape, or form. But there is a science to it and seeing how people's behaviors and in their interview and just for their simple driving behaviors on things that you're looking for, for interdiction, so. Um, K nine training, again, like I said, he did, uh, he had nine hours of training, but he had, he had four deployments. Um, he too credited with two no bite apprehensions, uh, three arrests and three charges. Nine hours of training, again, most of that, uh, is scattered across the board on what he did. Our overtime, we had six hours, uh, in court overtime, eight hours with the US Marshals overtime. Um, Sergeant Gully is, uh, they were requested by the US Marshals to assist since he's also assigned to the Northern Kentucky Drug Strike Force to assist the US Marshals in some of their, um, violent criminal, uh, apprehension team to, they have a bunch of federal overtime they came across and they were asking, uh, the Northern Kentucky Drug Strike Force, us to assist, um, in some of those apprehensions. That is fully refunded, so we pay the eight hours upfront. Federal government then cuts us a check for his entire money coming back on that. So, uh, he did spend eight hours in that. It was just him. So, basically, they square you in as a deputy US Marshal for a time being, and he was the only one, obviously, that's going to do it since he's also with the Northern Kentucky Drug Strike Force. Four hours of late calls, uh, two hours, uh, for field training. Officer Terry is now, I believe, we are cutting him loose and he is going to be on the road. So, he's our newest hire that we have. He was a lateral from the Kentucky State Police Post Six, so, um, he does, um, I don't want to say where he lives, but he is close to the area. He's very familiar with the area, I should say. Um, if you had seen a Kentucky State Police car in around neighborhoods around here, he's probably going cold, put it that way. Um, but that's no longer. He is a Villa Hills cruiser, so he is up here with us now. And we had eight hours of training for a total of thirty-one hours, so training for a month. It's my report. Um, if anybody has any specific questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
So, within the last couple of weeks, I mean, this has been going on for some times, but it seems like it's getting worse. Earl under Crescent Springs Road.
Mm-hmm.
So, coming from Dolwick and turning left.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
In the middle lane?
Yeah. Is there something we can do about that? I mean, that is backing up so bad now. I had to wait through two lights before I could even turn left because there was no place to go.
We, I can certainly reach out to the state. We know how that goes. Um, we do have the other complaint that we have on that roadway as well as people traversing the median.
Yes.
Um, well, this is something I took up with Stacy Tackey's office a while ago. The way the law reads, the law does not give any determination on using a double left turn on how far they can travel in that lane. There's no limit that says as long as they make a left turn. So, so the county attorney's position was that as long as they're not driving recklessly or carelessly, there's, there's no limit on how, so let's say they enter in by R.A. Jones and they make the left-hand turn on the Western Reserve.
Yes.
They're not necessarily taking a charge on that for you, for improper utilizing that left turn.
Okay, because I'm going to be honest, I have done that one time.
Mm-hmm.
I just keep my blinker on and go slow because if you can't even turn.
Right.
You can't even turn to go left.
Right.
And I think that with more of the, um, industry in that that's coming off of Dolwick.
Mm-hmm.
Like my husband today said that he had to go pick up our grandson who goes to Saint Henry High School.
Right.
And he said it was, I didn't think these people would use that road, but he said it was a bunch of prime employees coming that way.
Hmm.
Plus, then we've got the industry in that on Mineola down in that area, just plus more people, it's impossible to get through there.
Unfortunately, a lot of that is stems from backups on the interstate.
Yes.
Or, um, the minute that you have a, a crash on the interstate.
They're all in that road.
It, they are, everyone is scattering like cockroaches to find a different route. I understand it. We do the same thing. Everybody does. Um, and it walks those roadways down. So, even if you have a lane of traffic that's blocked on seventy-five, the effectiveness of the roadway drops thirty-three percent by just a police car being on the emergency strip. You take a lane, it loses its effectiveness by sixty-six percent. You take two lanes, you lose up to, you lose ninety percent of your effectiveness of an interstate. So, that's supposed to be free flowing. Um, so is the answer to not putting any police cars out there? Well, no, that's, that's not the answer. My English here performs. We still have accidents. We still have, you know, incidents out there as well and people shocking speed. Um, so we need to obviously do that and help that. Do I have an answer for you? No. Um.
But you're saying that as long as I go slow and have a blinker on.
According to our county attorney, because there's no.
I can travel in there.
And as long as you make the left turn, because if you don't make the left turn, there's no defined place, there's several ways, how about the, as you're going down that, there's several places where you can turn left.
Yes, there are.
So, as long as you complete that turn before you hit a stop bar, which you hit the stop bar at Western Reserve.
Right.
You are no longer, you're. Be disregarding of traffic regulation or is that what?
I don't do that.
Or disregarding of compulsory turn lane.
That's the way I go home, Western Reserve.
The suggestion to answer that, to fix that, um, to the state has been that they need to make, and this is not, I, I'd be surprised if it happens. You know our big tall yellow pylons and stuff like that, everybody absolutely loves Long Buttermilk? It's if you make a bunch of left turns on both sides, coming this way and then, and then pylon that off. Are they ever going to do that?
They don't do that.
They're not going to last long.
And then they'll last.
Yeah, they won't.
No.
But that's, that's, if you're looking for the answer, that's the answer to stop people going down the middle of that. To answer your question on how, how I can stop car, how many cars are coming through, I can't.
No, I'm not, I'm just worried, okay, so if, if I go that way and I do what I've done in the past a couple times, I'm okay doing that because I'm turning on Western Reserve.
According to our county attorney, yes.
Okay. Kathy, what I do is I usually wait for one of the big semi trucks to do it and I follow behind and act like I'm all cool because he's getting anybody who might turn into that lane.
Confession.
Yeah, but then he's going to go straight at the stop sign.
No, he has to turn somewhere.
We call those spontaneous occurrences.
Yeah. So, I follow them or I wait for like a big SUV. There's always somebody who does that. So, I'm just like, okay, you can take the key there. I'm going to sit there and just follow along and be up there.
Yes, Ms. Wilson.
And call nine-one-one.
So, I have a question because I witnessed an accident, but it was in Boone County, Houston Road, turning to go, um, Turf Way, I think.
Okay.
So, you know, they have those hatchmarks, but then they have an actual line that shows when you can turn.
Mm-hmm.
So, people can't, if it has the actual line showing, you know, this is where you get over and turn, then that's different than not having anything at all.
Hatchmarks mean that a vehicle can over, can go over that line. Inside the line, you're not allowed to go over that line.
Okay, so he could, so this guy could have gone so far in turn, but instead he kept going. And when a person actually went to turn when they were supposed to, he slammed it.
I'm trying to visualize where you're at. Um, are you saying like, were they turning together and they hit? Or was turning in one turn this way?
No, but so there's like the.
I know we're by my Boone County here. I apologize. I'm just trying to.
No, that's okay. So, there's like the lane, the lane there might be, I think there was two lanes. So, you go until.
Are they left turns or are we talking Walmart?
Left turns.
Okay.
You go until it gives you the line that allows you
Mm-hmm.
to get into that lane to turn left.
Correct.
Now, further down from that turn though, there's those.
Yes.
So, that person was okay to.
I'm, I'm trying to think of where you're at and maybe I'll, what I'll do is I'll Google map it and like.
Oh, sure.
I'll, yeah, and I'll try to see what, I'm having a hard time visualizing exactly what you're saying with that.
Yeah, because the guy caused an accident. You know, it seemed to me this, the one guy here waited to get to where the solid line told him to go and make left turn.
But if it's out of line, if he means that he can, that would, that would tell me that he could enter into that. But again, let me take a look at it and maybe I can.
Yeah, because he just came straight down where I interpreted it as not being allowed to.
Because I don't think we have anywhere. You're talking where, if you're turning in Wal-Mart's to your left, is that correct?
Not well, further down towards, um, the same, whatever.
All right, move on. Sorry.
It wouldn't happen if you followed a semi.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Uh, I was asked by a citizen to relay the, did you complain about the stoplights for Buttermilk and interstate that called them back up?
Okay.
I know you've tried your best many times, but.
I will continue my efforts. All right. No problems. But please let them know that it is a weekly email of Mr. Blaine issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Doesn't go very far. But now I'm not giving it a response.
Anything else for the chief? All right, thank you. Um, safety committee, Ms. Swadsworth.
Okay, just some highlights of our meeting. We are currently up to fifteen with the new hire officers. But unfortunately, Officer Robbins is retiring at the end of the month, so we'll be back fourteen. Um, talk about like age limits for SROs, none because of age discrimination. So, if y'all have noticed, the new paint job on the, one of the new Dodge Durangos. Awesome job, very nice. And as the, you know, as replacements come in, they will also have the new job. So, one and durable. And Durangos are still the best, um, value. So, Ressit approached, Carol McGowling, who's councilwoman for Crescent Springs, they wanted to know if the police drive through the park. Yes, was the answer. Um, there was talk about the overdose case in Emerald Springs was closed because it couldn't be verified if the suspect sold the drug that resulted in the overdose.
For that charge.
For that charge.
Somebody was arrested.
Right, but not for that, but they got a drug dealing.
Yes.
Charge, that's what I figured, so. Okay, and then potential drone classes being looked into because, you know, drones are a good way to, you know, attract, um, track cars that are like, you don't do height, speed, chase things. Instead, you do that, there's also thermal imaging for escaped people or, um, people that are.
That's what it primarily, we're just looking at drones as it is. Drones are obviously a sign of our times.
Sure.
More utilized for missing persons, fields, searches, things like that. It's just another tool for officers to be able to use. You can't be using those in like over private residences and things like that without search warrants and things like that unless it's a, um, an, an exigent circumstance.
And so, chief is looking into grants or matching grants possibly, you know, to help with that. So, the new playground at Lou Hartville Park started beginning of August and should be finished by the end of December. And it's supposed to have the rubber flooring on it, so it'll be safer and more adorable. Um, Sergeant Black is attending the administrative training course for the next three months. And then, um, Don Keely, the council man, we've got two of them, um, one not council, one council. Um, he was very appreciative of the whole boards and their, um, work with the Saint Joe's festival, so greatly appreciated as always. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September ninth, at three-thirty in council chambers. All are invited to attend. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Sir Thompson.
Thank you. So, uh, we met last Wednesday. Calls in Amsterdam, uh, attached to the minutes is just the latest quarterly report from Mayor Becker. Just kind of outlining what they've done, what we're waiting on. Um, the latest development, uh, is really two. One I'll talk about first is we did send a letter to all of the citizens in the affected area, kind of updating them as to where things stand and why they haven't heard much from us because we're not allowed to talk about plans or anything like that when needs comes, stuff like that. It jeopardizes our grant. So, we did send a letter just kind of letting them know that's the situation, um, and we'll get back with them as soon as we can. The, uh, latest development on the actual project has been that we, KYTC has asked us to pay for the environmental contractor to, you know, to conduct the environmental survey directly. Um, and I want to, I, I just want to talk about this for a minute because I think this is a perfect microcosm of why it has taken so long to get anything done with this intersection. So, KYTC is responsible for the environmental survey. And they took some money from us to do that, which is expected. Then the person left who was going to conduct the survey. They didn't have anyone. So, then they decide, well, we have, they have, you know, on call contractors who are already pre-served by the state. Like, okay, well, we're going to have this contracting firm do that. I'm like, okay, sure. And now they said, well, no, actually, we know we've got this money that we're holding. Actually, we want you to pay them directly. Okay, that's fine. We'll do that. Just, let's do something. So, we're, so the environmental survey I've been talking about for what, three months now, two, three months? Yeah, it hasn't been done yet. It hasn't been started yet.
Are they going to give us our money back?
So, they're going to, the money is going to be redirected to other parts of the project.
Of our project or somebody else's?
Our proj, or of this project.
Okay.
But yes, it's, yeah. So, I, I just, I wanted to really say that so you kind of understand why it has taken so long to do anything and get anything done with this, that this is the kind of stuff we're having to deal with, you know? This, this could have been solved in a day if they would have just said, hey, actually, would you just pay them directly and then reimburse? Okay, no problem. We'll, we'll take care of it. Let's just get it forward. But I just kind of wanted to illustrate that. I thought that was just the, a really great example of the ceilings that we're having to put up with sometimes here. So, uh, other news, so Prospect Point Water Main Break, we had, uh, we talked about it last month. That has been repaired and fixed. Northern Kentucky Water District, um, repaired it. Um, Reaver was already up there for the overlay, would have finished that part. Um, so that's all been taken care of. The road's in good shape. Um, and I think that the striping's been completely done. I know the crosswalk's been done. So, is that project pretty much done at this point?
It is. And we got a bit, do a little straight back entrance and other back to crosswalks. There's got to put in the other day.
Okay, so yeah, just a couple minor punch lists.
Yep.
All right. Um, we're going to have some other striping down around the city. Um, just waiting, you know, make sure we've got the proper weather for it. We are still working on getting the funds for the pedestrian bridge, uh, open so we can start working on that. We can officially begin until we have the actual funds given to us. So, we talked about the Prospect Point Overlay. Uh, we'll, should find out about our grant applications officially. It'll probably be October. Um, usually the October meeting is when they actually, uh, we, we usually get word before then, but the October meetings are when they actually officially say this is in the grant and pass all the resolutions and things like that. Salt Bend is, uh, pretty much done. Um, just got to do some little bit of fencing that was still, that's still left. It's up in.
Everything's complete.
Everything, okay. So, yeah, cut that fencing done, so we're done. So, really, the only thing we're going to do at this point is just kind of watch the salt level. You know, we're, we talked about whether we needed a door or anything like that, just to keep it out of the weather. Um, but we're just watching to see, you know, how much salt do we lose due to weather. If we don't lose hardly any, then we're just going to kind of leave it as it is, so. Then the other thing is the sidewalk program. So, we sent out another round of letters. A hundred and eight letters have gone out. We were very careful. I, Buck and Craig did a really good job of really inspecting all of the sidewalks, at least giving them a million to say, yes, this is still a problem. You know, one of the things we found is that a lot of citizens, the word is out that we're sending out letters about fixing the sidewalks. And so, they are preemptively taking care of things. So, we kind of check them all before we send stuff out. Um, and we also actually, they both did, actually did detailed inspections of anything that was seven hundred fifty dollars or more, the potential cost, or if it had more than one area in, uh, somebody's property, uh, just so we know we could get them all and that would all be taken care of. Now, the utility sidewalk repair, most of the utilities have been fixing things slowly. Uh, I talked before about the exception being Duke that they've said, you know, sorry, it's out of warranty, it's your problem now. So, we look, it's going to cost about fourteen thousand repair all of the Duke-related issues, call it that. So, we'll look at doing that as part of our concrete contract, panel contract.
What is exactly out of warranty?
Duke says when they come in and they do a fix and fix the side, well, you do the restoration, whatever, they warranty it for two, three years. And then once it's beyond that point, if there's something wrong, and they say, well, sorry, that's just.
So, the things we were looking to get fixed by Duke were things that Duke had done and re-broke?
That we believe that they were related to Duke doing work at some point in that area. So, but they.
Or as a result of movement afterwards, right?
Yes, or something like that, yeah. Yeah, so. But it's beyond their period where they say they'll cover it anyway, so. Uh, then the final thing is, uh, so we do every few years, we do a street condition survey. We're actually, all the surveys are actually, all the streets are actually gone over with, you know, ultrasonic measuring devices to actually look at not just the, the top layer, but the layers underneath to see what streets really need attention next. Uh, that's actually been done. We should get the results soon. We use that data really, uh, five-year plan and things like that to plan what streets we're going to do next. Because we cannot just see at the top layer whether it looks good or not, but we can see how's the road been underneath. And if we need to make any, some, you know, some streets look bad, but, you know, they may just need an overlay and they're fine. Others look okay, but there's problems underneath that we need to take care of. So, so that is it. Any questions?
Thank you. Public Works Director, Chris Reelton?
Good evening. Um, just to follow up on a couple, they cried at Point, just need a little crack ceiling done and minimal striping done. Um, they missed the entrance, um, Top River Day. He don't know why. They sub it out, but either way, they're going to come back and do that when they do the striping on Buttermilk Pike and that one strip on Villa Marie. Uh, Valley Trails, me and the engineer, uh, Mike Egger, walked it, minimal punch list, everything was good. Uh, all the phone calls pretty much had stopped. They got to do one little base repair that was pounding more, so I'll keep an eye on that. The sidewalk inspections, Craig gets all the credit for that. He's been walking a beat, driving, running around crazy and giving a little stack here, sending here and there. He takes the credit on that. The embankment over here, uh, we, uh, tore a lot of rock out. We ran a piece of equipment. Took a lot of rock out to haul in back in the eighties and nineties to make it safer for us to maintain. Uh, we, uh, we got some dirt free and so it, uh, it all worked out and it's safer for us to maintain. So, we'll keep an eye on that. And the erosion control, we'll keep an eye on that. So, it's going to need a little more seed stock. So, we just need to make it through winter and, and keep on that. Field five, we're working on that as of today. Moved a lot of earth today. Uh, we, we need some more dirt.
Oh, do?
We do now. Uh, made some phone calls today, so, you know, all the free dirt because of the amount of ramming we've had. Nobody's really been doing no big excavating, so it comes down to, uh, a little bit of money and I'll talk with you after the meeting on that. You get the long horns. Uh, other than that, everything runs smooth. Uh, thank the garden club. And our newest, uh, I guess summer help, uh, the name is Matthew. I can't pronounce his last name.
Lemco.
I hear we had him a note, uh, accident worker and, uh, he's a, he's just a good, he knows he's knowledgeable. So, hopefully he hangs around for a while. He's a big help.
Yes. Question. So, the Newhaner Memorial and the beautiful garden there, is the grass strip in front of it, is that supposed to be done by the city?
You mean, you mean cut?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, because as I was coming to the meeting tonight, there was, looked like a fourth grader in flip flops mowing that with a lawnmower, so.
I have no clue.
Yeah.
And that may be that house right there because he's got kids and they're always out in the street right there, yes.
Could be, yeah, it's looking.
I'll check on it tomorrow morning.
The flip flops and the lawnmower. And he was starting it and pushing it and I was like, oh.
Parents.
I know.
Parents, everything.
Exactly. I was just curious. I thought, that was nice of him, but what lawnmower?
What's our, uh, cycle for tar stripping streets?
Um, we try to do it about every three years and we try to spend it right around twenty grand.
Look, I, I walk my sub, that's the only one I know. So, I walk my subdivision every day and, and I look at the tar strips and they stretch and they pull and they crack back open and everything. And I guess my question is to you and the committee would be, would it be beneficial for us to do it more often to keep those cracks sealed, to keep the roads in better shape, or is it really not that bad?
It would, depending on the age of the street, because expansion, contraction, winter and summer, uh, concrete moves, asphalt moves, oxidizes. Uh, a lot of streets that you think might need it, they're going to be, instead of the lowered overlays, you don't, you know, you want.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, uh, me and the engineer can actually zip around and put a list together, but you're correct in your areas.
Yeah, it just, it looks like it's getting bad. I just don't want water getting in there.
We just have a basin in your area, I think, this week ago, yes.
So, like where they put it when you have a crack, is that what you mean by?
Yeah, they just take the, you know, the three-inch strip right across, right.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, but, you know, if it's like anything else, who's it breaks down?
Even snow plowing rips them up.
Yeah.
And it's like, I, I don't know how much damage happens before the next cycle again. Are we doing it fast enough or whatever?
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Finance.
Right, I'm covering finance this month. Um, so we approved the minutes for June. We did not have a July meeting because it was end of the fiscal year and there was nothing for us to review because it was being audited. Um, so, but we did approve the June minutes. We also discussed the June, July financial reports. Uh, we had, the one thing that we really had a discussion about was, um, some money owed, owed to us from the state of Kentucky. We had, the one thing that we really had a discussion about was some money owed to us from the state of Kentucky. So I don't know, this has been an ongoing topic in finance. I don't know how much it's, I know it's been talked about here, but it may have been a while. So ADP was one of our payroll, was a payroll processor for us, and they double billed, basically double billed us to where we were having, we paid two separate bills to the state instead of twice, instead of we should've only paid it once. And so we've been working for months, literally months, to try and get reimbursement from the state, and the state has always said, we're looking into it. And called us like, we're looking into it, so. Yeah, so you are used to state delays by now. The auditor recommended that we basically take this almost six thousand dollars and write it off, just saying we're probably not going to collect it. And we, as a committee, felt like that that, we disagreed with that strongly, that, no, because, you know, one, that's money owed to us. The state may take a while, but it should eventually get that money back to us. And two, you know, the clerks are still actively calling the state and working to get that money reimbursed. And so we're not gonna write it off, and we have people actually spending their time during the day trying to get us reimbursed, so.
What kind of service was it that we paid for?
It was, Craig, what was the exact thing that we paid for?
I think they charged us for unemployment taxes when we are reimbursable.
So we don't normally pay them?
That's correct. When, when a employee qualifies for unemployment, we then get quarterly bills from the state to cover that cost.
So worst case, if that scenario would happen, maybe I wouldn't write it off, but you could get a credit for future application?
In, in theory, yes. I mean.
Well, I wouldn't write it off, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's, that's, we, as a committee, we agree.
Apply for a credit or something.
We agree that no, it should not be written off. We're still working on it, so.
I agree with you.
Yeah. So, given that, with that adjustment, the committee recommends, and I'll make a motion, to post these June and July financial reports, accept them and post them to the website.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Go ahead.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then just a couple of other things. We did wanna, we're going to talk here about the unrestricted surplus. It's kind of getting large, large enough that we think we need to have a discussion in finance and really with us here about, you know, what level do we want that surplus at? What do we do with overage? Things like that. So that's gonna be a topic we want to discuss in finance and discuss here. In addition, we're gonna, next month, we're planning to discuss, one of the things that Councilman Bills noticed, being in the insurance industry, is our insurance premium tax is bringing in considerably more revenue than forecasted. Now, granted, you know, we do forecast fairly conservatively on the tax revenue side to make sure we always stay within budget. But it's getting, you know, it's, I think we're looking at a six-figure overage this year as to what it's bringing in. Because, you know, it, it's a percentage base, so it scales with insurance cost, and insurance cost is going way up, and so we're getting a lot more money in. So his concern is, you know, are we, is that proper, what's the proper rate, things like that. And I think the other thing that I discussed and that we all agreed was, you know, it's looking at like ten, fifteen percent of the budget now, just, of the revenue side, it's just that insurance premium tax. Which may be fine, but makes me kind of nervous that we're relying on one particular tax for a considerable portion of our funds. So we just want to make sure that that, we have a broad base and that doesn't get, doesn't become a problem, so. We'll be discussing that next month, too. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Administration Committee, Mr. Stewart?
All right, since we had no business to discuss, I do not have a report.
Thank you. Recreation Committee, Mr. Ringo?
Patrick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
I think right now, all we're doing is, you know, trying to work on the ball fields to get, the cycle we're trying to get done this year is to get the fields laid down, loom on top of it, seeded, and get the fencing up before the winter. And based on what Buck said, I'm not sure if that's gonna happen or not, but still trying to get that done. Otherwise, it's a whole nother season on the cycle, so. That'll be the real goal. Otherwise, you see soccer's back in full swing, football's in full swing, baseball's in fall session, so there's a lot of activity in the world. And the rain has been just great this year because we really, you know, the fields are green, which is wonderful, so. Keeps you guys busy cutting your rest.
Correct.
Fields are very good. Yeah, I saw them out there today. Soft field, it's very perfect.
Who's donating?
Yeah, they got a term that's going on.
Buck, who's donating the equipment? Does somebody donate?
No, no, nobody.
We're renting it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you guys are operating it and not renting it?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Fire Authority?
Fire Authority met this past Monday. The July financials were reviewed and passed. There is a change to the fire department's procedures on responding to fall calls, which are people who just fall and are not injured. There are a lot of calls like that, either at the nursing home or in homes of older people or heavier people who can't get back up. So instead of sending a paramedic, we now are not sending the paramedic, we're sending a fire truck behind it to be assist, but leave the paramedic at the firehouse because we've, we've blown up our, our residents here by about twenty percent in the last five years, and calls are starting to rack up more and more, and we're needing to keep them back so that we don't, we're trying to stay away from a third ambulance. So I think that's a good procedure that Jeff, Jeff Wink put into effect. With the firehouse, there was a lot of little activity that's going on. I think we're getting close to closing out the firehouse completely now. Bottom of the doors were sealed, concrete was sealed, yellow painting outside was done. There's leaks in a couple of air conditioner units that are being taken care of. So those little things, we hopefully in the next month or two, we'll be able to get the close on that, and then we'll know if we eventually have money that we can get back to the city. Other than that, the equipment, that striker, the deal that I told you about a few months ago, that's all come in. They're all being trained on that new equipment now. And other than that, the next meeting is Monday, September fifteenth at six p.m.
Any questions from Mr. Ringo? Great, thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Stewart?
Um, I do not have much of a report. The only thing Craig will probably be seeing from us is the ongoing Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, which is going to be pending long after we've all left this earth. But anyway, that, that's that multi-district litigation bankruptcy that's in New York, in which all cities in the United States are participants. So there's been another proposed settlement. This time, unlike the last settlement where the cont, where the state attorney generals all represented us, all the cities and counties, we have to actually individually opt in. So we're, we have the forms, we are filling out those forms to opt in for the City of Villa Hills. You may, you'll probably get some money off of it, but again, just like before, you're not gonna be able to spend it because the statute is so restrictive on what it can be spent on, and it will probably go through the inter-local agreement with Kenton County for services, but, so, you know, that's what we're working on right now. And then just a few miscellaneous foreclosures brought by mortgage holders, mortgage companies, banks, that have brought us into those foreclosures. Other than that, you all have been pretty silent, so that's good. I would knock on wood.
Yeah. Any questions from Mr. Stewart? All right, thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Bailey?
Um, I don't really have anything except for Jennifer asked me to let everybody to know that we are going to be working on the newsletter soon. And if you have anything that you would like to be added to that, please get that to us, either Jennifer or I, as soon as possible. And she did want everybody to know that Matt already went ahead and has submitted something regarding speakers. So that will be in the newsletter, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Best City Administrator, Mr. Bowman?
I think, Your Honor, just a friendly reminder that we are slated for a caucus meeting next month, so second Wednesday of the month, here.
You mean September?
Other than that, I, I don't have any.
Second Wednesday is the tenth, yes. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Great, thanks. Okay, just a few things that I have come across. The Kroger in Earlanger is going to open on September nineteenth. The, we just had, for the Events Committee, we just had the Shred Event back in July. Just thank you to everybody who was there. I was unable to make it. And it was a very, very good turnout, unfortunately, the, the truck got filled about twenty minutes till it was set to close. And so we closed it, and of course, there's people who are not happy with the fact that it closed, even though we tried to make everyone aware that it was going to be on until it was full. So upcoming events, Citywide Yard Sales, September fifth and sixth, that's a Friday and Saturday from eight to one on those days. Fall Fest, September twentieth from five to nine. We have a fundraiser for Shop With A Cop on November fourteenth. We're still working out the details. And then Christmas in the Park is on December sixth from five thirty to, I think, eight. Eight or eight thirty. Well, it's eight now.
Okay.
All right, and then, let's see. All right, so at the Mayor's Group Meeting, the county, Joe Schreiber, was telling everybody that there is an interactive roadmap on the county's website, if you're not aware of it, that shows the, the repair schedule for all the different roads in the county. So, or no, I'm sorry, not the repair schedule, who owns what roads in the county. So if there's residents who are interested, or they're concerned that, you know, there's something going on with a particular road, they can look at this map and find out, you know, who to call. Now, inevitably, we're still gonna get the phone call, but just so we know, you know, that, that, you know, function is out there. And lastly, Northern Kentucky Water District is going to send letters to the City Administrator regarding the key streets that are set for restoration for Water Main Break, so I don't know if we got that yet. Okay. And that's all I have.
I have a question. Any progress on Santa Run?
Actually, we changed it. So because we could not get a decent date, because there was always something else going on, it's a really popular time for running, we decided to, we agreed to change it. The Shop With A Cop fundraiser is going to be on November fourteenth. It is in conjunction with the Villa Hill Civic Club, and it will be a bourbon tasting and potentially a wine tasting. So there'll be registration ahead of time. Those proceeds will help Shop With A Cop. And any sales that get made that day, the Civic Club will benefit from that, so. So, to be determined. Were you looking to run?
No.
Oh, all right, I'm just kidding. I, I didn't know if you were training. I just didn't want you to.
No.
Okay, all right.
You were just so excited.
I know I was, but, you know, I mean, then there's bourbon, so.
True, but, you know.
It always, it, you know, solves all the problems. Okay, moving on, legislation, Stewart?
Um, you have a couple items of legislation. First item of legislation is second reading and approval of Draft Ordinance twenty twenty-five H, and this is an ordinance of the City of Villa Hills in Kenton County, amending section fifty point fifteen of the City Code of Ordinances to adjust the assessment for the garbage service in the city.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Um, Ms. Bailey, please take role. Mr. Bills? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Ringo?
Yes.
Ms. Dover?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Next item you have up is for first reading, and this is first reading and draft, and discussion of Draft Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash I, an ordinance of the City of Villa Hills in Kenton County, levying an ambulorum real estate tax of twenty point one cents for each one hundred dollars in real estate valuation, and providing for interest and penalty charges for late payment, and levying a personal property tax of ten point seven cents per each one hundred dollars of valuation of personal property within the city. And this is for first reading only tonight.
These rates represent our compensating rate, so they will bring in the same amount of revenue this year that we brought in last year. The rates themselves, because this is not an assessment year for us, are fairly flat. Last year's was twenty point two, and this year's proposed is twenty point one. For real, real property and for personal property, it was ten point three. Now it's ten point seven, and that's primarily because several utility companies took write-offs on some of the valuation of their equipment and that lowered that assessment value, so the rate goes up a little bit higher to try and compensate for that lost assessment value. If council is, wants to adopt these rates, all we need to do is have a second reading at our September meeting. If council wishes to take rates higher than this, I need to kind of know probably through, through discussion tonight, because we would have to post public hearing notices and notices in the paper at least twice in the seven to twenty-one days prior to the public hearing. And so we would need to know whether you want, if you wanted to do that, if you wanted that public hearing at the caucus meeting, or if you wanted it right before the council meeting next month. Staff doesn't have a preference. If that's the route you want to take, we just need to know so we can get the paperwork processed. Because if you wanted the public hearing at the caucus, we will have to try our best to get the ads and everything in a paper by Monday.
So the only question I have to ask about, and I think we're okay, the four percent, did we build that into the budget? I can't remember.
We did not.
So is it built into this rate?
No, the four percent's not built into that rate.
Because we had talked about doing that, and that this would be the time you'd have to adjust the rate to get that, to capture that. Is that correct?
So the budget, the budget that was approved, was approved using a comp rate value. So this ordinance matches the budget that was passed by council.
But the budget didn't include a four percent increase.
It did not.
On the property.
Yeah, it did not.
That's my point, is we had talked about doing that, so the only other opportunity you have to capture that then is by adjusting this. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Setting the tax rate is a council function, so this is something you have to do every year.
Right, but setting the tax rate is the only way to get that four percent property tax?
That's correct.
Because it's not been built into the budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, even, even if it had been built into the budget, you would still bring in the ordinance that would have higher rates, higher than compensating, and it would still require all the public hearing.
Right.
And that's in notices and everything.
Right. But we're allowed to take a four percent property increase without having a public hearing?
No, without having an approach.
You can take the compensating rate without a public hearing, but anything over compensating rate, you have to hold the public hearing. What you're thinking is, is if you go over four percent, then it's subject to recall.
That's right.
So if you want something other than compensating rate, or you're thinking of getting something other than compensating rate, then we need to know tonight so that we can get the notice in for the public hearing.
So that would be the question to council is, do you want the four percent or not?
Given our budget right now, surplus, I don't, I don't see any.
Well, my only, my only retort to that would be, as long as that surplus money isn't just spent and goes into reserves for future purposes, I, I would agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, and I'm conscious, too, that, you know, every year you don't take four percent, that's.
Half thirty dollars.
Yeah, that carries on, but, I mean, we're six figures over budget on insurance premium tax and surplus.
Well, and, and, and I didn't want to raise it there, but that's the point is, the insurance premium is bringing it. Again, I mean, you got, I got four pockets on my pants. What do I care if the dollars in the front, the back, left or the right? Okay, you're getting it from me. As long as it's being used for the right purposes and being put into reserve for future purposes, all under the right intent, I'm fine. So I don't care if it comes out of my insurance or my property tax or whatever.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I just, I'm fine with these rates the way they are for this year.
Did everybody feel the same way?
I do, based on the surplus that we have. I do based on the surplus that we have, you know, and what are our plans then to get that into, you know, for future?
Well, you have, you would just basically not approve any out-of-budget monies being spent, unless we have a full discussion of it. At that sort of end of the year, that money would be left over, we would put it in reserve.
Well, and that's part of the thing that Jim Cato brought up during the meeting on Monday for finance.
What did, what did he bring up?
About the surplus. And, you know, what, what are we gonna do with it, what's gonna happen to it, or we just intend?
It's substantial enough, we need to have a full discussion about what we want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, personally, I'm worried just on, just a fire department's perspective. We are not getting volunteers. The volunteers we're getting are costing us a lot of overtime right now, but they're getting harder to hold on to. Same thing is happening with his guys. When that cycle keeps going, it means rates, prices go up, costs go up. We're gonna need monies to take care of these things, and these are known. They're known, we know they're coming. So, I just don't want to miss opportunities, so I just, the council was of the opinion then that if we're sitting in a really good situation with the insurance tax, and it's an overage, and we'll put it in reserves, unless we have a major discussion about expenditure, I'm fine with that.
Isn't insurance premium tax used to pay for the fire department expenses?
Yeah, in, in theory, it is, it's very similar, the, the amount of money we bring in from, from insurance premium tax is very close to the amount of money we spend on the fire department, especially after we count the firehouse loan payment from gas and electric.
Yeah, you got the gas and electrics paying for that, I mean, I don't know that you can really identify the insurance, I mean, when, when did that ever happen that it got identified for the fire department?
It wasn't, with the intent of, yeah.
But I mean, if you look dollar for dollar, yeah, it kind of equals out. But I wouldn't say that, that's the whole source, or if there's extra money, that it goes to fire department, you know, we use it for other things.
Right.
So, but it is sort of been tagged like, okay, it does have to equal out, let's throw it to fire department.
Well, and the idea being that the insurance premium tax typically, you know, keep it in line with where the costs would be associated.
Where it would be spent.
And it would be typically the fire.
Right, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Craig, I think that you explained one time about this four percent rate, that that doesn't mean that the taxes on your house are gonna go up four percent. It's four percent up above the total that you collect.
Right, it would, it would be a four percent increase on revenue. So, crash course in Kentucky tax rate setting is General Sibley, in their infinite wisdom back in the seventies, late seventies, decided that they were going to, and that was a period of high inflation and stagnant wages, and so people were really struggling, kind of similar to what we have today. Decided that they were going to develop a formula that was going to keep revenue steady year to year to communities so that they could have a steady source of income for budgeting purposes. And to, to do that, they came up with this great scheme to develop what they call a compensating rate, which is what rate would you have to charge this year to bring in the same amount of money you brought in last year? And because valuations change all the time, I mean, every time a house sells, valuation changes. Every time somebody turns sixty-five and they get the homestead, value changes, it drops, you know. Sometimes, you know, new houses are added, you know, how do you do that? And so, so the evaluation, the valuation of a community is never the same year to year, but this formula process makes sure we bring in the same amount of money every year. And so, when we talk about the four percent rate, what we're talking about is that rate that would bring in four percent more revenue citywide than, than it would, would have brought in using the compensating rate. So, for an individual, taking the plus four rate might impact your tax, probably would, a little bit. But some people may see a larger increase because maybe their house just sold and the valuation for PBA purposes went up. Maybe they would see it go down because they just turned sixty-five and they just got homestead, and, and so they would see a shrink. So, it's not a guarantee that any individual property tax owner would see a four percent increase. But if, all things being equal, your house has the same value, you didn't take a homestead, then yeah, you probably are gonna see a four percent increase.
I just worry, and this is just me, because I'm very conservative about spending, that everything is costing more. This is a simple example. My granddaughter wanted to buy her mom a spoon rest for her birthday next week. So, she sent me the picture, it was on, of course, Amazon. Would you get this for my mom? When she sent it Thursday, it was nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. When I bought it last night, it was fourteen dollars, ninety-nine cents. So, unless in a week, it went up five dollars. This is just a small example. That's what I'm worried about with the tariffs and other things that are impacting what things cost. I worry about that. I don't like the, I don't like the thought of maybe next year, all of a sudden, it's like, gosh, I wish we would've done that last year because we would've had a little bit of money packed away that we could've used, like the grasshopper and the ants. I'm kind of more inclined toward getting the four percent. It's my opinion. So, I will make a motion that we do that, and we can see how everybody else feels, if there's a second.
Let me, let me ask a question off of that, because that, that's where I was going generally in the first place myself. But the insurance premium is over, but no one said how much over. We know that the four percent usually gets us about, what, seventy thousand?
It'll be around eighty thousand now.
So, how much over are you expecting at this point? If it offsets the seventy, then I don't have a problem this year trading off. If it's not gonna do it though, I'm, again, in the same way Kathy is, I think we just have to plan for the future and not be naive today.
I'm trying to pull up the financial numbers.
I mean, I can see insurance premium alone, just because a sanctuary would bring in a lot more money. Because that's basically all-new revenue on high-value homes, and cars, and everything else that insurance covers.
So, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars in July for insurance premium tax revenue, and we brought in two hundred and eleven.
So?
And, and that's just the first month of the year, though.
So, that's five percent?
And, and we're going to be over in August as well. August is probably about a hundred thousand, maybe ninety-five thousand budgeted, and then I think we're over a hundred thousand in collections for August. I just don't have the monthly budget numbers in there, so I'm.
So, what is the total year budgeted amount for insurance?
One point one seven five.
So, if it was maintained at a five percent over, we'd be looking at fifty thousand, right? Is that right?
Pretty close.
So, last year, and I, this is what Council Lewis was talking about, last year, we were over budget on insurance premium tax revenue by a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars over the course of the year.
On the June financials.
Yeah. So, that's what he was saying, is we're, you know, that's, we budgeted a million twenty thousand last year, and we brought in, you know, one point one seven. So, you know, it's a ten, fifteen percent over budget, or revenue over what we thought it was.
But this year, the pace is five percent, not fifteen?
In the first month.
First month.
Or the first two months, if you're saying.
So, I guess that's, that's what I'm looking at, when we're, given the economic situation, given that, you know, we basically turned in double, almost double property tax increase last year over what we budgeted via the insurance premium. And I mean, and other things too, but, you know, to less degree, you know, payroll tax, we were over budget by a hundred and eight thousand last year. We budgeted six seventy-eight, and we brought in, you know, seven eighty-six.
Well, we've talked about that before, but one of my concerns, and Jim used to raise it a lot, was everybody I know is back to work five days a week. So, we're no longer, the Villa Hills tax coming off of that, torn back to Cincinnati, or Covington, or Erlanger, or wherever. So, I can't count on that one. Anyway, how do you feel about that?
Is there a problem with, because I don't know this, and Craig, you know, or somebody knows this, the answer to this. So, can a city just bank money in case they need it for the future?
Yeah.
Because we know, yeah, that's, that's what I thought, and is there a limit to the amount that you can, you know? I really don't see the problem of having that extra money in case we need it. We, we haven't even started anything on Collins yet. By the time we get to that, they're probably gonna be building the bridge, maybe. So, then we have concrete rising, rebar, and all that other stuff is going up. I, I don't feel that it's a problem to have that money on hand if we need it, that we're not scrambling to get it, or can't do, our streets, our sidewalks are all getting older. We always need road money, seems like to me. I'm still in favor of, of taking the four percent.
So, if we took the four percent, that would bump your budgeted amount by seventy thousand, which would change your compensation rate to what? Instead of twenty point one, it would be twenty point two, point, point three?
Unfortunately, I didn't bring that, I can't go across street here, but I don't have access to it.
But anyway, so what you're saying though is that if we, we do it now, or we have, we push it off the caucus and then vote?
I would, yeah, my recommendation is, you'd have to have a second, you'd have to do a first reading on that ordinance.
So, you would do that?
Yeah, so we can advertise that ordinance.
In order to get you done, so that you could do the cycle?
Right, I think it's point two oh nine, off the top of my head, but I have to verify that.
Point two oh nine.
Add one to it.
No, no, it, it, the proposed is point two oh one.
Yeah.
It would be twenty, it would be twenty point nine cents instead of twenty point one.
Twenty point nine, okay. All right, what do you guys think? Do you don't want to do it?
No, I don't.
Patrick?
You probably have to make a second and then take a vote, right?
Well, discussing.
Well, we really haven't, we don't have the, so I think it's more a motion for the, a meeting for, I mean.
It'd be, you want to make a minute.
To talk about, yeah, so that then Craig can bring back several ordinances and, and we can advertise it correctly. So, I guess the question is really whether, so the motion would be to have a meeting to discuss the, taking the higher tax rate.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I think we, let's at least have the meeting to really go over with that.
Is that the caucus?
Right, yeah, it would be the caucus, yeah, just direct staff to prepare the public hearing notices and everything.
Okay, yeah, I'll be in favor of that.
Yeah, we're discussing.
So, so discussion at the caucus, does that mean public hearing at the caucus, or public hearing at the council meeting?
Will you tell us what it does for your schedule? It puts you.
Obviously, obviously, the later date helps us get the proper notices into the paper easier on time. The downer for, I guess, council is that you're having the, the public hearing and taking public comments moments before you vote.
Yeah, I, I kind of like to have the caucus, I know it's hard for you all, but I kind of like to have the discussion at the caucus and then leave some time to let it sit, or, you know, give public comments based on what we talk about or anything like that, so.
That's good.
So, public hearing at the caucus?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've done it before, I mean, this is not the first time, so.
So, does the, the public meeting then, does that before caucus start, so we can do it?
As part of caucus.
You can do it as part of the caucus now, so.
Make sure it was before I didn't miss it.
Yeah, now, you can do it as, within the meeting now.
So, then we would have a first reading at the caucus under a new ordinance with a four percent?
Yeah, what I would propose is just bring an ordinance for four percent, as well as we'll bring back this ordinance, and just, you know, even though we've done first reading tonight on this ordinance, I would just say, after you've had your, the caucus, then maybe do a first reading on one or the other. So, we, you can always do first, two first readings, and then follow up with your, your second reading.
So, basically have the hearing and the discussion, and then have the, a new ordinance as well, both ordinances brought, with the compensating and with the four percent. And so, after the discussion, we will have a first read either, again, of this one or the new ordinance.
Right.
So that, the second reading would be during the council meeting.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And that would get you in on time.
All right, you got what you need?
Yes, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Um, let's see, I lost track of where we were.
Discussion approval of municipal order.
So, the next item of legislation is discussion and approval of Draft Municipal Order Twenty Twenty Five dash J. It's municipal order of City of Villa Hills in Cat, in Catton County declaring surplus property. This will surplus two sedan cruisers, badges and weapons for Officer Robbins' retirement.
I just have a question. So, what happened, what do you do with the guns and the badge? Do you just keep it for another officer, or what do you do with it?
Those are actually, the, the guns and the badges are actually, the badges are surplus to give it to him as a token of memorialized for him to be able to keep. And then the guns, he is purchasing at Fair Market Back here from the city to, as his retirement weapons.
All right, that's fine, I just didn't know what you did with that stuff. Thank you.
And then the cars go on the up deals. So, you'd like for that.
Okay.
So, there's three guns, two?
Two.
Two guns, a badge.
Two guns, a badge.
Two guns, a badge.
Okay.
So, we, do we have any other discussion? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Um, next item is discussion and approval of Draft Resolution Twenty Twenty Five dash, dash G, a resolution of the City of Villa Hills in Catton County to enter into the mutual aid agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky and other cities and county entities.
So, this was requested by Homeland Security in Frankfort, also highly suggested by Chief Winkman, by Steve Hensley down at Catton County Emergency Management. The format's a little different than what we're used to because we basically took the resolution that the state wants us to adopt, and that's why the formatting's a little bit different, and then they have the extra certification and stuff in the back, because that's how they want to see it. But this basically allows us to provide mutual aid to any jurisdiction in the Commonwealth, and it also in turn allows any jurisdiction in the Commonwealth to provide us mutual aid, as long as they adopt this. That, we, we all do that anyway, right? You know, when the chips are down. But the, the good news for this one is, is it would actually allow us to qualify for FEMA reimbursements if it's, if it gets declared, and, and those funds are available.
I'll make a question. Except?
Hold on a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. And that is the end?
Yes.
Of the legislation. So, moving on, we have any old business? Or any new business?
I just wanted to say that the Chasing Cole Fisher STEM Wing renovation will finally begin in September. And so, of course, they're saying the new STEM wing will be five to six months, but we all know it will not be, you know, so I see it probably not until the beginning of next school year. but it's going to be, you know, fantastic. There's been a little bit of a redesign and, but, you know, it's ready to go, so.
Any other new business? Any general comments from council?
Was that supposed to be a general comment? I just had.
That's all right. That's all right.
I got two things, but one is I don't know who did it, if it was you or the state or whoever, but the repair on Amsterdam and the repair on Shore Amsterdam, man, those are great. Because those things were nothing but jarring. Yeah, and that one was on the curve, which, I mean, I literally had just seen it yesterday, two cars passing, and they looked like they were going to hit because they both bumped at the same time. So thank you for that.
And then that steel plate, if you have seen it yet.
I did see it.
We put that down today, we did in-house.
Yeah.
That's one of our next projects, we're going to area, pipe separating, so I had to work right on like a second tomorrow.
Yeah, those, those repairs are great. And the other one's just a question, does anybody know what's going in on buttermilk next to Ameristop?
A bank, yes.
Bank. Well, that's less traffic than a Starbucks, so.
I think they said some green space.
Yeah, there's going to be some green space, and then there's a bank. Did.
Green space, green bank, money, I've got it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's indicative of anything, but hey.
My understanding is it's not a traditional bank, it's more of a call center that they have. So it's, I think it'll be a small financial system in there, but it's more of a call center than it is an actual regular bank institution. But that back lot, so the previous parking spaces available there with the church were forty-nine parking spaces, and I think there's only going to be twenty. I don't know, I'm speaking out of turn on that one. There's more green space in between the house that's there currently and what will be there, you know, when they build, if they're building.
Do you know which bank?
I had heard Bank of America, but I don't know.
Crescent Springs hasn't said anything, yeah.
It's like a giant secret.
When is the Wendy's to go supposed to go?
I don't think that's been confirmed.
Somebody needs to cut the grass there, the City of Crescent Springs. Or whoever owns that property. I don't know if Heritage Bank still owns it or not.
Good question.
Yeah, I don't know. Neither them or they leased it. So I don't know. Any other general comments, council or staff?
I have, I just have one announcement. I totally forgot my monthly, September thirteenth, Saturday, is the Tunnel to Tower race. So just keep everybody in mind that the roadways from Collins will be delayed and shut down for buttermilk. Collins to River Ridge and back will be shut down. We'll close at around eight o'clock, and it'll reopen right around ten o'clock. Just to let everybody be aware, we will facilitate you throughout the city and get people in and out of our homes, thank you.
Um, I guess registration's open.
Yeah, registration has been open, yeah, and I don't know how many they're at, but that is the larger race that we tend to get. But I mean, Chasing Coal Fisher 5K is giving them a heck of a run for the money.
I was glad you didn't see it, John. All right. I spoke too soon, sorry. I know, I did. I just said I'm surprised you didn't. Um, okay, any other general comments? Any public comments? No, any executive sessions start?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, I'll second, Seuss.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. We will see you at caucus.